All right, we want to go ahead and begin the meeting tonight. We want to say welcome to everybody in attendance. We're glad you're here. And we always begin our meeting with a prayer and a pledge. So we'd ask everyone to please stand at this time. And we're going to have Commissioner Lynn Green do our pledge. And but first Commissioner Patrick Ellis will do our prayer.
It's about it. Father, just like take time out of the day to say thank you for all the blessings you give us. Thank you for this beautiful county, the people in it, all the business, all the families. We ask you for your guidance each and every day of what we say and do. It doesn't matter if we're commissioners, if we're taxpayers, if whatever it is, we're asking for your guidance. And we ask for your forgiveness when we fail you. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, gentlemen, at this time, we have the minutes. You have had a chance to review those minutes. What's the pleasure of the board concerning adopting the minutes as presented?
Motion approved, second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. We have tonight's agenda before us.
Before that, I'd like to go, does that close session as well, the past session?
Yes, if you would include the close session minutes.
I'll make a motion for to include the close session.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay, we have tonight's agenda before us. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I know there's one member absent, and I think you have to leave shortly. Maybe item D in our new business, the employee leave. That's not a pressing issue. I think it was something that you brought up to be put on the agenda.
Right.
It's okay to maybe defer that till next month.
Motion to table until next month.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay, thank you. Now, as far as the agenda goes, do you have a motion to approve that now?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like sign. Let's go to our first item on our appointment schedule. This is getting to be a pretty familiar scene, I believe, whether the sport changes. We've got the honor tonight to have the New Manah Christian School baseball team with us tonight. And those, these guys here again have won two out of the last three years, the state 1A Christian Association's championship. So we're bringing y'all in tonight. Coach Wagner, if you don't mind, sir, come on up with the team. And we are so glad you're here. And tell us a little bit, we've got some information about the three playoff games you were in, and it looks like you had a really nail-biter in that championship game. Tell us about it.
First of all, I need to say, I apologize, we don't have a lot of our team here. A few of them had to leave and stuff like that. But anyway, for the playoffs, the first, that first game we had was a home game. We ended up winning that 10 to nothing. So that was a decent game. The second game, I couldn't be there because my daughter just graduated from nursing school. So I had my assistants there, and they ended up winning that game 4 to 2. Championship game, it was down to the wire. It was, I think it was 3 to 3 at one point. Micah ended up hitting a triple, and then Jake ended up hitting a homerun, ended up making it 5 to 3, and we ended up winning that game. So this year was a different year. We had six seniors last year, and so we had to try to fill the roles this year. So I just came out and said, hey, let's just come out and have fun and see what happens this year. We ended up winning all the games, ended up being undefeated again. So it was a good year.
Wow, what an accomplishment. On behalf of the board, and these guys can say whatever comments they want to, it's just, it's so good to see the successes that New Manah Christian School has had recently in athletics. And we just want to honor you and your team tonight and just say, on behalf of the residents of McDowell County, we're all so proud of what y'all done.
Appreciate it.
And we've got a resolution tonight, gentlemen. What's the pleasure of the board in adopting the resolution?
To accept it as presented.
Okay, Commissioner Ellis makes a motion. Commissioner Green, the second. I want to read the resolution first, and then we'll go ahead and introduce the team, the members that are here. This is a resolution in honor of the New Manah Boys Baseball Team. Whereas the McDowell County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the outstanding performance by the student athletes and the coaches of the New Manah Christian School Boys Win Baseball Team during the 2024 baseball season. Whereas the New Manah Christian School Boys Baseball Team advanced through the North Carolina Christian School Association, finishing the season winning the NCCSA 1A West with an undefeated record. Whereas the playoff game number one victory of 10-0 against Scotland Christian Laurinburg at home. Whereas the playoff game number two, the victory of 4-2 against New Life Christian out of Rocky Mount in Wilson, North Carolina. Whereas the playoff game number three, championship game, victory of 5 to 3 against Oak Level Christian Stokesdale. Whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the McDowell County Board of Commissioners to recognize and congratulate head baseball coach Aaron Wagner, assistant coaches Brandon Wilson and Wayne Stafford. The team players are Hunter Buchanan, and if you're here when I call your name, come to the front, guys. Hunter Buchanan, 7th grade. Jaden Velini, 8th grade. Noah Davis, 8th grade. Byron Stewart, 8th grade. Come on up, sir. Mason Kidd, 10th grade. Brody Davis, 11th grade, all region. Good job. Derek Crowder, 11th grade. Tommy Honeycutt, 11th grade, all-state. Tommy was all-state. And Micah Wagner, 11th grade. Come on up, Micah. And Micah was also all-state. Cabot Payne, 12th grade. Troy Henley, 12th grade. Matthew Demick, 12th grade. We've got Matthew with us. Cannon Stamey, 12th grade. Charles Ray, 12th grade, he was all-region. And Jake Addison, 12th grade, he was all-state. Be it resolved by the members of the McDowell County Board of Commissioners that the student athletes and coaching staff of New Manah Boys Win are to be congratulated on winning the North Carolina Christian School Association State Championship adopted this 10th day of June 2024. Let's give them a hand for excellent job. Gray, anything you want to add? Any other comments you want to add?
No, I just appreciate these boys, appreciate the opportunity to coach them. It's been 20 years here recently, so.
And is that the championship trophy?
It is, yes.
All right, so Gray, I'm glad you brought that tonight. So what we want to do now, guys, before that, any commissioner want to comment?
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations on my behalf. And you know, it's pretty unique to see sports and Christ tied together. And I certainly admire that and wish you guys the very best.
I want to congratulate the team, and I know, I know most of the guys because we go to church together, but I don't get the opportunity very often to tell you how proud I am of you because that I know that you're the same on the field and off the field. And I encourage you to continue that because one of these days, the sports is going to mean a whole lot less than what's coming. Okay? So we're proud of you. Thank you much.
All right, guys, let's go ahead and get a picture of y'all, okay? At this time, let's go ahead and have Chip Cross come up. Chip, you're the president of the Rotary Club this year, correct? So we have Mr. Cross with us. Mr. Cross, welcome to the boardroom. Good to see you. And we do appreciate all that Rotary does, an outstanding organization. So we're so glad you're here. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. It's great to see you, Ashley. Thank you for getting me on the agenda. And yeah, I am here on behalf of the Marion Rotary Club to thank y'all for what you do in this community. Rotary was formed in the early 1900s by a gentleman named Paul Harris in Chicago. He was an attorney, and it was formed for fellowship and community service. So it's been great. It's been a great experience. We've got two of our wonderful Rotarians, Ashley and Mike. He gives us the best public images you could ever hope for.
And free press, right?
But we're, we've added about 20 members this year. We're up to close to 100. We're right at 98 right now. And but one of the things that we have really wanted to do is to thank people in our community who are serving our community, who are, who are doing community service. So I have a letter of appreciation, I'm going to bring one to the center, but I have a letter of appreciation to y'all, and I'm just going to read, you know, part of it. "Thank you for your service to our community through your efforts as a McDowell County Commissioner. You invest time in planning, review countless options for our county, listen to our citizens, and look out for their welfare. You have made a huge impact in our community, and you are a role model of Rotary's creed, service above self. Our Marion Rotary Club salutes you, keep up the great work." So thank you for what you do. And then this is a letter of appreciation. I kind of wish it was more on a certificate, but letter of appreciation, I'm just going to read David's name, I've got one for everybody. But this letter of appreciation is hereby presented to David Walker for exemplary community service and demonstration of Rotary's motto, service above self. Thank you, Marion Rotary Club. So y'all are the leaders in our county, and it's, you know, y'all know this better than I do, but there's so many people in our county who are doing community service. We've got 400 volunteer firefighters. We've got over 100 people who are doing volunteer work on rehabbing houses in the county. And I'll say just a couple more things about our year this year. We raised $60,000 in our fundraising auction, and we tried to put that in places where we could multiply it or leverage it to have a greater impact. So we're within about 60,000 meals of sending a million meals to Ukraine. We're sending 240 wheelchairs to Ukraine. We sponsored a program to send a surgical team to the Dominican Republic to repair, do surgeries for children who were born with cleft palates. We sponsored a club in Honduras, so we sent some, some funds there, but most of them actually stays in our community. McDowell Tech currently has a Title III matching grant in their scholarship fund. So we donated 20,000 to that. That got matched, it became 40. And we partnered with Snyder Paper. I'd actually done some training for them a couple of years ago. They donated 15,000, that became 30. So those have been joined, so now we have a $70,000 scholarship.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, endowed scholarship at McDowell Tech. We donated $10,000 to the ramp building project. That was matched by Gateway, so that became 20,000. That will build 20 ramps. If you had to outsource ramp, they're 5,000 a piece. So that's a $100,000 project because that's $80,000 of free labor. So anyway, we've tried to partner with, you know, great people that we have in this community. But again, we just want to say thank you. We want to say we appreciate you, and you know, thanks for all you do for our community.
Chip, we can't stand up to Rotary, just hearing the information you gave just now about some of the projects y'all are involved in. And one really, I think a lot of is the McDowell Tech partnership, where you leverage money to help kids be able to go extend their, their education beyond high school. And all the programs are wonderful you're involved in. And so really, this, this war, to our board, to have this presented to our board is very humbling because really, we need to be the one presenting the Rotary with, with an award because y'all do phenomenal. So take our most sincere thanks of appreciation back to your, your group, club, Rotary Club, and let them know that we appreciate what they do and, and just tell them, thanks for thinking about us. It is sometimes a tough job, but we appreciate the thought, and, and it means a lot. It means a lot.
You're very welcome.
Any commissioners want to say anything to add to that?
Thank you so much, Chip. Thank you so much.
Don't anything you want to add to that?
No, Chip, we really appreciate that. You know, it's, it's very rare that we, we get any kind of special recognition for what we do, but we thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I do want to say too, thank you for pointing out other volunteers as well because it's hard to go fight fires in the middle of the night and, or whatever it might be, you know, and you mentioned 400. And that's, that's a great number, and it's people that love our county.
They do. And I forgot to mention this number. Everybody that comes to our meeting, whether it's student of the week, whether it's a speaker, whether it's a guest, I've been sending a letter. And then we have different volunteers like y'all. So we've given out 1,200 letters. That tells you how many people are doing work in our community, you know. Now, I can't remember all the fire departments. We did do the EMS. We did sheriff department. We're going to do the police department, you know, people doing law enforcement. And some different boards of directors, people who are volunteers at the Carson House. I know we're going to miss some, but you know, you've got McDowell Tech board of directors, you've got McDowell Tech foundation, like you said, you've got all these people. So we appreciate all of it.
Chip, I want to tell you that, that I appreciate what you guys have done, but I want to publicly say that I am not here for any recognition for myself. When I ran for public office, it was because that I had a desire to serve my community and my county. We could not do what we do if it weren't for the people out there that care about this county and, and volunteer and do what they do. We, we just couldn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chip. At this time, Vice Chairman Brown's going to take the meeting. I've got to go to another location. So, Mr. Brown? Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chairman Walker. We'll move along now under board appointments. We're at item B, which, no, item C, which would be budget public, public hearing. So at this point in time, I'll declare us in the public hearing setting and turn the floor over to Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Again, before you hear from any comments from the public on the budget, just a quick reminder, the budget was presented a little over two weeks ago in this room. The opportunity now is for the public to comment on that budget as it is or how they would desire it to be. After you receive comments, you will ask, I'll ask that it be closed out as far as the hearing. I am asking that you not approve the budget tonight because there's a few more back and forth type questions and so forth for different agencies. And so we're not ready to have it approved tonight, but you've got until the end of the month to do that. And so again, now will be the opportunity for you to call on the public.
Okay. Is there anyone on the right that would like to speak tonight?
I have a request. It's probably something new, and I should have been here before, but I can do it at another time, but I'm just not sure when it's appropriate.
Does it have to do with the budget?
Does it pertain to the budget?
It does have to do with an investment in the school system.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Is it okay if we can?
Yeah, come up to the podium, please.
Yeah. Good evening, thanks for letting me come up. So after a few recent incidents.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself?
I can, I'm Jonathan McKenzie. I live in McDowell County and have for the last four years. So we've had a few recent incidences at the schools, or at some local schools, and my sons, I have one son who goes to West McDowell Middle School, and one son who goes to McDowell High. And they're both autistic children. So after a couple of incidences here at McDowell County High, McDowell High School and West McDowell, I would like to request the investigation into or investment into fast, reliable communication devices and a set of protocols to be put in a place to ensure the safety of the students and faculty and reduce the risk of further injuries. I've had a discussion with Edwin Spivey and Nokia Carson on this matter, and it is my understanding that there are some elementary schools in the county that have had successes in retaining state and federal grant money for funding of the, for funding this type of effort. I would propose that before school goes back into session in the fall of 2024, that all of the schools be equipped with either an application for the phones of the faculty to be used for communication purposes, or some sort of quick response device that will allow for mitigation of the potential for dangerous events occurring at the, at our children's schools. This type of activity must be rolled out with a plan or a specific protocol so that the faculty can use these devices. Otherwise, the quick communication may not be crisp or clear enough to act. I would also suggest this type of activity to be in conjunction with our school resource officers to ensure all are ready for rapid response when the time is needed. On Friday, May 31st, two administrative faculty members were injured by a student over a vaping incident at McDowell High School. I feel like we have to help keep our children and the employees safe during their time at schools. I know that we are a smaller county, and sometimes funding can be difficult to obtain, but I feel like this type of investment would be advantageous in the risk mitigation of these types of incidences. I also propose to donate my time to be part of a community, a committee, to organize the documentation for an RFP, a request for proposal of set equipment, and for the implementation of a communication protocol to help keep all of our school employees and children safe during their time at school. Please accept my appreciation, along with Chip from Rotary Club, for all of the board, that the board commissioners and the good people in our community do to provide service to our public. So thank you guys very much for listening.
Mr. McKenzie, could you copy that to our county manager? And we have monthly meetings with the school system, and we'll sit down with them, and we'll, we'll talk about this if you will.
Sure, yeah, I can send a TV.
Thank you.
Ashton.
Yes, sir.
Mr. McKenzie, I'm also going to give the county manager a name, who is our Safe Schools Coordinator with the school system, for you two to get in touch with each other.
Sure. And however I can help, I'd be glad to dedicate my own time, even some resources if I can answer.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Did you have anything? Was you going to say something?
No.
You still can?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Anybody else on the right side?
Okay. Anybody on the left side that would like to speak tonight, on behalf of the budget? If not, do I hear a motion we go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now out of public hearing. Next on the agenda is the Givens Estate Project. Mr. Wood, would you introduce Ms. Stevens?
Yes, absolutely, I'd be glad to say. As was discussed, we're very fortunate to have McDowell News in this community for bringing to our attention many important things, such as the Givens Estates Project. So there's been good coverage in the paper about their Clinchfield proposal, and I won't steal much of Teresa's thunder, but I realize in some of our recent discussions, Givens hasn't been to this board to talk about their project. And so there's an effort to have some endorsement of their funding that they're looking for through federal sources primarily at this point. And so I knew that would almost be automatic from the board of commissioners, but before making any assumptions, I wanted to make sure Ms. Stevens had an opportunity to present some updates on the project and then seek the endorsement. So she's here.
Okay, Ms. Stevens, you have the floor.
Thank you, thank you, Ashley. And I really appreciate your time tonight. We've been meeting, I believe, with folks from McDowell County and Marion for almost either maybe over three years. Because our approach is to start with trying to get to know what your community needs and wants. And we were down here actually, meeting with Neil Gurney from the Gateway Health Foundation, looking at property, when a consultant was with us and her, an architect who was passionate about saving old textile meals called her and said, well, while you're there, why don't you go look at the Clinchfield mill? And, and in all honesty, we, I still get goosebumps when I talk about that moment because we drove down there. It was not on the market, but we reached out to Mr. Guffey, and he was open to the, the idea, and quickly became one of our biggest supporters in converting that to housing. So we've been pursuing funding for that since then. It, it's a long, it's a long, hard route to get to affordable housing funding, but it's, it's worthwhile in the end. And we've had a great deal of support from really everybody in, in the county. I think it's, can they see the presentation that I sent? Was that supposed to be up?
Yes, and we've got it up there for the public as well.
Oh, you've got it, okay. And does this click through? How do I?
I think if you hit the down button on the clicker, it should advance, should. There you go.
Oh, there you go. So I'll just, I'll walk you through a few slides, which I didn't, I didn't do a really long presentation, but just to remind you, you probably know better what it looks like than we do, but the hope is that we will, it's, it's 19 acres, it's a little over 19 acres. And the Dogwood Health Trust was very enthusiastic about the potential at this property. It, go down, more slide. You'll see there, the, where the blue is, that is the area that the Gateway folks hope to put single-family homes using USDA funding so that families, 80, about 80% of area median income or below can have a homeownership opportunity and, and build generational wealth and some equity. The circle in the middle, in that green area, I'm going to zero in on that in a minute, but we have, initially, that part was kind of up in the air, but now we've been working with Western North Carolina, Western North Carolina Community Health Services, Winches. They were looking here for a place to build a large primary care clinic, and some other options fell through when they found this property. So it's our hope that that will be in the top part of that. And then still a little bit up in the air what's going to happen with the boiler house, but we are going to do what we need to do to save the boiler house and the smokestack. And then in the red circle at the bottom, we'll, that's the standing mill that's left, and we hope to do 141 apartments for seniors, which is a substantial dent in the need that your, your county has. What else is the point? There you go. This is, this is a site plan. This has not been updated to show the Winches piece of it, but you can see how the single-family lots would be. The, the pond will be restored as well. It's part of the historic site. And then you can see where the parking would go in. There we go. That, that's the latest drawing we have from Winches about the, the health center. We are very excited about the partnerships that have come together on this because the idea of having, they plan to have primary care, dental, behavioral health, therapy services, and having that there in that community, serving those seniors. services, and having that there in that community, serving those seniors, as well as what we will do in that, in the apartments, is a very exciting partnership for us. I wanted you to see, just because the, the capital stacks to get these done get very complicated. The HUD 202 Capital Advance is, is sort of the lynchpin funding. We put an application in for that funding last year, and frankly HUD made a mistake, and HUD never really admits to making a mistake, but they actually admitted to making a mistake on our application, but they wouldn't go back, they wouldn't back it up. So we've put in another application this year. My colleague Andrew Crossan and I have been working very, very hard on that. They give us 120 days to pull it together, and we've been working very hard on that. Once we get an award from HUD on the 202, well, let me back up. The HUD 202 financing is particularly valuable in senior housing. It is specifically for senior and disabled housing, and it has to go to a nonprofit, which is, part of the reason for that is because nonprofits that are doing affordable housing do it long-term. It's not just going to be turned over in 30 years and made in the market rate, right? It is a long-term. HUD requires a 40-year commitment initially, and we extend those, we're able to extend those later as a renewal. The HUD 202 financing also comes with a subsidy for those apartments. So for the number of apartments in that, that would have HUD, that HUD would fund, would also come with a Section 8-type funding, so that that helps us serve the lowest-income seniors in your county. So they would never pay more than 30% of their income for both rent and utilities, and that gets recalculated every year. Once we get an award from HUD for that, we will turn around and apply to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for 4% tax credits, which are non-competitive, and then that would, and we automatically, because now we have the, in April, we received the historic designation. We have been working on that for several years, so now that mill is on the registering for historic places, so we get historic tax credits. The North Carolina Mill Credit has been reinstated, and so there's a, a good bit of money that comes from the state for those mill credits. We're, we're raising funds, which are soft funds, grant funding, from various foundations for $1.5 million. The, the foothills consortium has granted us $300,000 in, in home funds, and then in the HUD 202 application, the general partner, who is Givens, the Givens Estates, is required to put in a $10,000 equity contribution, and we defer part of our developer fee to help make that capital stack work. There'll be a permanent loan of $4 million, and then the Dogwood Health Trust put $3 million into the project to help us buy the entire property. So it's, it's quite a stack of, of funding that gets us to just under $50 million investment in that property. And that's not counting what Winches will do and what the Gateway Foundation will do. So it's, it's a pretty big investment. So we received the historic designation in April. Our HUD application is due June 20th. HUD plans to announce those awards in early 2025, and, and as soon as they make awards, what happened there? We will immediately apply for the, the 4% tax credits, which is, is part of why I'm here today, to talk about the bond inducement by a local municipality. That's the, so the, I brought Andrew because he understands the bond information much better than I do, but the, the bonds come down from the federal folks to the state. The state has to have municipalities administer those, and, and that is required for that 4% tax credit allocation. So, the bonds will have to be, this required by the IRS, 57% of the overall project cost, so a little under, a little over 28 million. They're only used during the construction period, and what they do is provide a lower interest rate construction financing. The municipality has no responsibility for, or obligation for repayment, and it does not impact the municipality's credit rating. So you're, a lot of people talk about it as a municipality being the conduit or administrator of the, of the bonds. So that's, so I, we, we don't know, and Ashley can, can tell us, I don't know, don't know if it's possible, but what I think, what we're here to ask is if we can go ahead and get a bond inducement resolution now. In the HUD 202 application, the application is strengthened by what HUD calls other committed funds. So anything that we can get committed ahead of time, like if they see local support that you're willing to induce the bonds, that tells them that we will get the 4% tax credits, because the bond inducement will trigger that we would get 4% tax credits, and that would assure HUD that we have all our ducks in a row in doing that. We, we actually didn't get notice that that might be a possibility for my, for us until just a, a little over a week ago, and started communicating with Ashley and Bob Boyett about the possibility.
We can certainly go ahead with a resolution for you on this tonight, I think, and make that possible. We, you know, we've all been excited about this from the kickoff, from the very first day of it, and Neil, we have communicated with him several times, I think about it, but I think we can go ahead and do that resolution, couldn't we, Ashley?
Yeah, I've spoken briefly with Teresa and also with the city manager. Either the city or the county, one or the two are eligible to work through the inducement conduit process. I think there were some, maybe some more complicating factors that the city did it more so than the county, but this would be, as Teresa mentioned, it does not affect our revenues or expenditures. We're essentially a fiscal agent for the process. It's, it's paperwork, but primarily the bond council does the, all the effort, and there's a hearing, I believe, eventually that would be required.
It'll take a little time, I think, but I think what we need now is a, you know, I need a motion to let you proceed with it, Mr. Wooton.
I'll make the motion that we address a letter of support and resolution for this project.
Second that motion.
Any other comments? All in favor of that, say aye. Any opposed?
Can I ask one question? And it may be, may be a little early for this.
You can ask as many questions as you want.
What is, what is your goal on the timeline?
Our, our goal is to, so it takes a while to close, as you could see, that very complicated capital stack, and HUD is the most difficult, very slow. There's nothing ever, you've probably had experience with HUD before, there's nothing fast about HUD. It, so it takes a while to close on the financing. We won't be able to start on the construction until we do. So if we get an award early January, February next year, and then we begin working on those 4% tax credits, that, that's an easy, once, getting that award is the, like the lynchpin, then we would hope to begin construction in maybe first or second quarter of 2026. So it's, it's not quick. Affordable housing is never quick.
So you said that.
But it's so worth it.
You said that HUD made a mistake the first go-around on that. How much of a mistake did they make?
Well, they actually, they actually made a couple of mistakes. So they, they, these are very complicated applications, and the first thing, and we have to do like an environmental study to submit with the application. So they sent the, the environmental study to the, we don't even know, they wouldn't even tell us if it was a qualified environmental engineer that reviewed it. They were just like, they were qualified, just take our word for it. They reviewed it and they got hung up on thinking that we needed a Phase 3.
No, no.
Well, let me, you come up, Andrew. I'll let Andrew fill in.
Good evening. I'm Andrew Crossan, Project Development Coordinator for Givens Communities. The first mistake they made is they couldn't read a survey, and they rejected our application because they couldn't tell the difference between a 19-acre parcel and a 7-acre parcel. And once we slowly explained to that, to them, what the difference was, and showed them the pictures that we had already submitted, then they realized they made a boo-boo. And then they needed to find another boo-boo to cover the first boo-boo. So that's when they went into saying that we needed a Phase 3 when their, their, a Phase 3 environmental study, which their own application procedure says if your Phase 2 says you don't need a Phase 3, then you don't need one. They said, well, we, we feel we need one anyway. In addition to that, their own rules say that anything that does not affect your application's scoring is curable, and under the, the environmental study is not a squorable thing. So they still said they could not take our application despite the fact that we had followed their rules, and we should have had a chance to even address the rules that they were changing in the midst. So we were, we, we went for about five months back and forth with HUD, exchanging pleasantries, but in the end they said thanks, but no thanks, try again next time. So that was a lot of fun, but we made a lot of good new friends like Tommy along the way, and advocating to our federally elected representative, so.
Yeah, I was going to mention, we, we have a representative for our congressman here with us tonight. Tommy, we welcome you and appreciate you coming out.
No problem at all, and just let them know that they, they did indeed go through a hard time with HUD. The D6 staff worked with them diligently and ended up hitting a brick wall, and I just wanted to clarify and make sure that they sent a support letter for round two, and we'll follow it right, we'll follow it right to the gate and make sure it comes through.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to say, Andrew and Teresa, just thank you for your due diligence, working for our county. The place you got over in Asheville is beautiful, and we're looking forward to you all making a beautiful spot down here for the people that need it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and for your support.
You're welcome. Now moving on to old business, first up on their old business item, May, would be the water project update. Mr. Wooton?
Thank you. Quite a bit of work is happening in the Nebo area. Quite a, different sections were ending on Phase 1. You'll see work on Wildlife Road, had some calls from folks out there asking about project status. Work has started on Hoppy Tom Hollow. That was really good to see. I've got a press release ready to go to Mr. Conley very soon on that, some photos. Get to some action here that I need from you. The bids for Phase 2A and 2B were received in this room a couple of weeks ago, so you've got in front of you the, the low bid for A and B, the low bidder, was TP Howard Plumbing. For Phase 2A, it was $2,310,000. 2B was $1,890,000. Again, I'll ask for action in a second. We do have the bid tabulations attached, but for the minutes, we'll enter for 2A those bids, as well as 2B, and the recommendation is they be funded, I'm sorry, approved as presented. The funding is from the American Rescue Plan Act, as passed through the state of North Carolina.
I make a motion to accept the awards 2A and 2B to TP Howard Plumbing as presented.
Second. Here in the quest, we have a motion and a second to accept the bids. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, and I'll just close out. We've got the East End Project in Nebo, which is around Marion Lake Club area, is heard update today, it's been sent to the permitting office. Exit 90, which is south of Harmony Grove, south of the interstate, that is under design, that's, it's an Appalachian Regional Commission funding. And then there's a private developer doing a small extension on, in a development on the end of US 70, that's about to start, and that will be about five or 10 homes at completion. And then the Providence area going towards West Marion Elementary, staff meets tomorrow to select the most qualified engineering firm for that project, and hopefully at the July meeting, we will have a contract in front of you.
Okay.
Things are moving.
All right. Moving along then to Item B, which is broadband update. Mr. Wooton?
Thank you. Mentioned, I believe, last month that we were in a, essentially a quiet period for the completing access to broadband grant, which is still technically in that quiet period, but I tell you enough that we had a couple of submissions for companies to provide services in our community. There's been a committee meeting, or actually two, where we've reviewed proposals from companies. Selection has been recommended from the committee that will go back to the Department of Information Technology to do some final clarification and negotiation with the selected firm, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, that firm will finalize the offer, and will be able to make, make an announcement there. So, very good news, good company, good history, and I look forward to the announcement.
It's another project we're really excited about, so we're looking forward to that, the completion of that one. Next on the agenda will be Item C, the building update. Mr. Wooton?
Thank you. Again, mostly updates, no real movement on the DSS Building advocacy. As I stated before, we did provide some information to our state delegation on information they requested on cost for that facility. I mentioned last month, on the transfer station, 911 Center, there was some opportunity for federal funding. McDowell News ran the press release that was put out by Congressman Edwards in the last week, and so as the release indicated, the congressman has endorsed these projects, and there's many steps to go, many months for review, and so that is not a guarantee, but we do, I know the board does, and staff appreciates the support from the congressman, but the staff that work for the congressman did a lot of work on those two projects to get those ready. Recreation Center project is under construction, and we've got about five or six more months of that underway. I will mention, just as a point of clarification, the city of Marion will shoot off the fireworks on the, on the 4th. Typically, they have done that either at the ball field location or very close by. That's still proposed this year, we've been able to work that out with the contractor. We have asked the city to assist with patrolling the site, so we don't have folks come onto the property and maybe endanger themselves, so city manager has promised cooperation there. And I mentioned last month, on the animal shelter project, some planning there, we've had, we've been looking at county-owned property, and I mentioned last month, it was looking unfavorable towards location near the Saddle and Bridle Club, and I did hear back that the property right there on 226, because of the soil quality, it's not suitable for construction, so we're going to have to look somewhere else for that. So been doing a So been doing a little bit of preliminary evaluation, maybe that we might have in the county, county ownership.
Okay. Important that we find that.
Yes, sir.
Again, express our gratitude to the congressman, Tommy, for everything he's done for us on trying to secure these grants. Tell him just to keep twisting arms and we'll, we'll be very thankful. Next on the agenda will be item D, and that's the Charlotte Inter Basin Transfer Request. Mr. Wood.
Another update. Mentioned last month, this is gonna be a very long process for the City of Charlotte and their request to, to increase the inter basin transfer from the Catawba to the Yadkin Basin. I did meet with the Marion City Manager with some county and city representatives from the Western Piedmont Council of Governments about three and a half weeks ago. There was a discussion about essentially what happened in 2006 with the Concord Kannapolis request is being looked at as a template, the situation where the, the communities cannot just go to the Environmental Management Commission. And so we do not like this. We can say that, but we have to be able to present options and alternatives, which was done last time. And so during that last situation, the communities came together. There was engineers hired that, you know, will study the situation and make recommendations. And so that's more than likely what will be requested here for this situation. Charlotte has scheduled an additional public input meeting for July 15th. That will be in Morganton at Kama. Staff will attend if at all possible. Made sure the town is aware they have interest in attending, as I'm sure the city will as well. And so, like I said, it's gonna take a long time, long road on this one, but we'll keep you up to date and we'll keep it on the, on the agenda.
We could always reroute it and send it to the Gulf of Mexico.
Back over the mountain.
Yeah. All right. Thank you for that update. Moving along now to new business, we'll start off with item A, and that's the NCACC Legislative Goal Process. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. We love acronyms in government. The NCACC is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. That is the advocacy organization for all 100 counties. And their, their duty, which in challenge can be very difficult, is to represent 100 counties. And one county is different from the next one, let alone, you know, 99 others. But they do the best they can to represent counties with one voice. And so what they do, heading into a long session, is they have a Legislative Goals Conference. In that conference, the counties can send representatives. I know Mr. Green has been a participant in that process before. But we will send a representative, and goals are, are brought forth from the counties. And there may be a multitude per county. Every county can send in as many as they want. And they go through the list, and they've kind of packaged them together where you don't have a lot of duplication. But they look to essentially build their advocacy program for the two-year cycle. So they have started a little bit earlier this year. They're asking for goals to be submitted by August. So that's, that'll give them more time to prepare the program. So when the session starts in January, they will have a little bit more of a head start on the advocacy. So there is an attachment, just to give you an idea of what they're looking for and some prior examples. Chairman is not here, of course, but he did mention a goal that you've expressed recently, and I believe last month, was state consideration on universal pre-K, whether that's expanding funding for that program and/or counting pre-K enrollees as part of the ADN, average day of membership. So that, just an idea. But if you want to take this home and think about it, we'll have it on next month's agenda.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll just table that till the next meeting. Okay, moving along to item B, the Youngs Fork Watershed Project. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. This is one of those projects, we, we might end up calling it just the Young Forks Watershed Project, Youngs Fork. I might slip and call it the Universal Stream Project, might call it a number of things, but regardless what I might label it, this is a project we've had in, in our plans for quite a while at our Universal property, but we haven't had funding until recently to do anything about it. There is a creek that is part of the Youngs Fork Watershed that flows through the property that is, the creek originates on the north side of Interstate 40, flows through our property, and eventually into Youngs Fork below our property. The creek itself has some erosion issues that, if not addressed, could cause some detrimental impact to the property. The cul, the creek goes through a culvert under one part of our property. That culvert is 50 years old, it needs to be replaced. We've known that and been preparing for it. And also, we have two dams that are on that property that, what was that creek flows into this one, but those dams discharge into this creek. So there's a lot going on there that need, need care and attention. And so we have been working on planning that, and I've talked about this the last couple of years in this room. Thank goodness, the funding came along from General Assembly because of our needs there. So last meeting, you approved administrative contract to help with this project. What you have before you tonight is a, is a construction contract with North State Environmental. That firm will work with an engineering group called Jennings Environmental. They will work with us on culvert replacement, creek repair, dam repair, a few other things. And so you've got a design-build contract before you ask for your approval with those state funds.
I'd like to make a recommendation to take the design-build contract as presented.
Second. Motion, second. To be clear, there was no county funding involved in this project.
That's right.
So that everyone would understand. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving along to the Courthouse Crave, that's not grave, that's Crave system, so we're gonna let Mr. Wood lead us on that one.
Courthouse Crave. Crave is a, a system that the Administrative Office of the Courts is, has implemented in many of their courthouses, if not all of them. This is a, a video system and screen system that has been installed in many courtrooms. Their goal has been at least to be in one courtroom per courthouse. This allows folks, especially youth, to testify in court cases and possibly not be present in the room with their potential offender. And so we had a system installed in our newer courtroom about a year and a half ago that was paid for by a Dogwood Health Trust grant, no cost to the county, maybe some electrical cost. A second system has been expressed interest by the court system to install in a second courtroom in the courthouse. That would be at county expense, about $8,600 is that request. And so the court system has made that request, and staff is recommending that you do so.
Make a motion to accept the Crave plan as presented.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. We tabled the employee leave policy until next month, for those of you who just may have come in late. So we're skipping that one, moving on to the fireworks approval. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
Thank you. You are required to approve all fireworks shows that are in the unincorporated areas of the county. There's a list attached of all those associated with, primarily with the Fourth of July holiday.
Make a motion to accept fireworks show as presented.
Second. Discussion.
Do. What happens if there's private individuals that want to have people over for that? Is that required as well, since it's in the county?
Anything that leaves the ground in North Carolina is illegal. So if they have a private show, they've gotta have some sort of permit and people qualified to put that show on.
Gotcha.
Especially that latter part. These, these organizations have folks with bonding and insurance, and, and that's part of the requirement.
That's all good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
You ought to vote. We got a motion in a second.
Okay. And no discussion, that was all discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wood. Next is the budget update. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. Getting towards the end of the fiscal year, of course, this is the last month, and so the budget amendments are getting at the end as well. We have amendments GF 51 through 54, DS 1, Enterprise 3, which is for the Waste Fund. And there are two project budget ordinances for, an amendment for the EMS base project, and then, which is an amendment 3, and then Golden Leaf Site 2, which is related to grading. That will happen hopefully this summer at the Golden Leaf, the Universal property. Sorry.
Your motion to accept them is presented.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next is administrative items. Mr. Wood.
Thank you. We have a resolution for vehicle financing for one Ram truck for public services, one Tahoe for emergency services, and aid explorers for the sheriff's office. In addition, we have EMS write-offs this month, and those are the only administrative items.
Move, we approve those.
Second.
Item.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next would be board appointments of Madam Clerk. Will you take care of that?
I can. There is an updated memo at your place. It's essentially what was sent to you with two additions there at the bottom. The Foothills Workforce Development Board, I might call it a specialty board. While you do appoint the members of that board, they have to fall in certain criteria. And so there may be, in this instance, like a manufacturing representative or someone such a line, but in this instance, they need somebody from higher education in the community. Dr. Merritt was filling that seat, and obviously he's left. And Stacy Buff has expressed interest in filling that seat if you're so inclined.
I think Stacy would do a great job.
Do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept Stacy as our rep.
Second. Motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
For the America 250 Committee, we have had what I'll call a kickoff meeting with, with no real action yet, but we do need a county commissioner volunteer for that if there's inclination for that. The committee is meeting tomorrow at 11:30. So if there was ability and interest from a commissioner, that would be, be wonderful. There are two, there's a member of the Board of Aldermen instead of council that's been appointed.
Did you say they are meeting tomorrow at 11:30?
Yes, sir.
Can't make that one.
And we can bring it back next month.
Yeah.
We'll do that. We do have staff coming. I will try to go as many times as I can. Mr. Harmon is gonna try to go, so we'll, we'll keep you engaged that way for now.
It's a short notice.
Quick turnaround, so we'll work on that, bring this back next month. Couple of other readings there. We continue to seek appointments, and we'll do so. This is also the first reading, we're notified by the college today, that Mr. Chad Marsh's term on the Board of Trustees expires at the end of the month.
Doing a great job, in my opinion.
So would you like to have that vacancy advertised? Would?
Well, the, the board has the right to nominate him for that position, don't we?
That, that's your right, if you want to waive a first reading.
And he has not, he has not stated any information about wanting to stop serving on that.
I don't think so. I think it's the opposite.
If he, if he's still willing to serve, I suppose. I think he's doing a great job.
Make a motion to keep.
Okay. Other discussion? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I think that's all we have on board appointments.
Okay, on tax matters, Mr. Wood.
These are typical, couple of refunds for some real property as well as vehicles. Nothing too exciting this month.
Move, we approve tax matters.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving along now to citizen comments. Do we have any that have signed up? Is anyone else on citizen comments? Okay. Anything Commissioner's staff reports?
Move, we adjourn.
Do need a closed session just for a few minutes.
Move, we go into closed session.
Second, closed session.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. We are in closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion. Will we be adjourned?
Go out in closed session.
Or come out, come out in closed session?
Say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.